I'll call to order the December— I'll turn my mic on. I'll call to order the December 1st, 2014, city council meeting and ask those who would like to join myself and the council in the pledge of allegiance to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Moving now to audience comments. Citizen's comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions that we make. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment will have the opportunity to do so. When recognized, please come forward and use the lectern. State your name, address, and relationship to the city. For example, resident, property owner, business owner. Please limit your comments to five minutes, and if you have written comments, please submit those to the city clerk. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. If a speaker is out of order, the mayor will direct the speaker to return to his or her seat. If the speaker does not comply, the mayor will ask him or her to leave the council chambers. Again, citizen comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process, and we take them seriously, and we thank members of the public for taking the time to come to address us during our meetings. And with that, I would ask the city clerk, has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
There are none.
No one has signed up. Is there anyone in the audience desiring to speak who has not signed up? Second call, anyone in the audience desiring to speak? Third and final call, anyone desiring to speak? Seeing no one, audience comments are closed. We'll move now to committee and regional reports, beginning with council member Milligan.
No report, mayor, thank you.
And?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
And council member Martz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Land and Shore will meet next Tuesday here in council chambers at 6:00, and we will be covering three topics. One of them is our bike and pedestrian plan, the name of which, at the moment escapes me, but it is our bike and pedestrian plan.
It's called Walk and Roll, I believe.
Thank you, Walk and Roll, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that very much. We will also be discussing the next steps on the council's request around city-owned properties, the survey of properties, and finally, we will be getting an update on services and upcoming work coming before Land and Shore. And I have a second conversation that I want to have about Sound Cities Association pick, and I'll save that for, for the good of the order. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Cher.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening to members of the viewing public. The council infrastructure committee will meet tomorrow evening at 5:30 PM in the Pickering Room of City Hall Northwest. On the small but mighty agenda, we have transportation concurrency and impact or mitigation fees. That's going to be an ongoing discussion that we've been having for better part of a year. About two hours are budgeted for that particular item, and we certainly welcome any public input on the concurrency process as well. We have a discussion on alternatives concerning transit, especially the Route 200, and we have a discussion amongst the committee of complete streets project priorities. The meeting is expected to last approximately two and a half to three hours, just for your information. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Council member Barber.
Thank you, mayor. Services and safety, we will be meeting on December 4th in the Eagle Room. There are three items before us this, that evening. The first is Agenda Bill 6989, I think, without my glasses, park naming recommendations. The second is 6891, and this is the amending the Issaquah Municipal Code in regards to inmate health, welfare accounts, and booking fees. The third Agenda Bill before us would be 6917. This is an inter-local agreement with the Public Safety Emergency Radio Network System. And again, 5:00 PM on this Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Goodman.
No report.
And council president Wintersheim.
No report.
Moving then to the mayor's report, there will be an executive session held this evening to discuss property acquisitions per RCW 42.30.110, per N1, per NB, and per NC. This item is anticipated to take 20 minutes, and if council action is taken, it will occur in open session. I'm asking our citizens to join me at 9:00 AM on December 13th for Meet the Mayor at City Hall in the Coho Room on the second floor. The Cascade Water Board met on November 19th and approved a number of professional services contracts associated with normal operating expectations for 2015, and also ratified two emergency declarations, association with the need to do some unforeseen valve work at Lake Taps that has to be done before the lake can be refilled. The work under these declarations did not require additional budget appropriations. At the Sound Transit Board meeting on November 20th, they reported out the ridership for the third quarter of 2014. Compared to the third quarter, through the third quarter of 2013, the Issaquah-Seattle ridership was up to—was up 12%, and year-to-date boardings for that route are about 811,000 riders. Typically, I've never really reported that before, but, you know, a million riders back and forth between Issaquah and Seattle are a lot of—replace a lot of single occupancy trips, and just highlights the importance of regional express transit in that corridor. Also, the board discussed potential changes to the long-range plan. Of interest specifically to Issaquah being considered is an extension of light rail to the Issaquah Highlands and the potential regional express slash bus rapid transit route, a new one from the Issaquah Highlands to overlay via Sammamish and Redmond. The board will consider adoption of the updated long-range plan with amendments at our December 18th meeting. On Monday, November 24th, the city administrator, director of finance, and myself met with state representative Jay Rodney to discuss our legislative agenda and the upcoming legislative session, with an emphasis on the I-90 corridor and the capital project at Confluence Park. And with that, that concludes the mayor's report, and we will move now to the consent calendar. And I would ask the council—if ask if the accounts payable and payroll have been reviewed.
Yes.
And with that, I would ask your pleasure on the consent calendar, council president Wintersheim.
I move that we approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Moving now to regular business, there is no regular business scheduled this evening, and I have a procedural question. Should we handle good of the order before we move into executive session, or do that afterwards? In—once we go back into open session, if we do.
We published it.
Why don't we do good of the order first, and I would ask if any council members other than council member Martz has anything for good of the order, beginning with council member Martz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So there were two issues before the public issues committee when it last met, and I have forwarded on the—I forwarded on both the agenda for that meeting and the resulting minutes to the rest of you. And so these two issues, I'd like to get any feedback that you all have, that you want to help inform my comments when these issues come back before pick next week, next Wednesday down in Renton. So the first of the two issues is, the proposed action is to bring back to the next pick meeting the proposed policy position. The Sound Cities Association recognizes that public health services are needed to ensure the health and safety of all of our residents. SCA supports increased statewide funding for public health through additional revenue streams dedicated to public health. These sources may include, but are not limited to, taxes on e-cigarettes/vaping devices with funding dedicated to public health. And with that, I will ask—
I think what you're asking for is council thoughts on that particular item, and I'm assuming if council member Milligan.
Thank you. Tola, I did look through the information, but I don't recall, does the—do the e-cigarettes, vape, rised cigarettes have any taxation like cigarette taxes now, or just sales tax?
I believe it's just sales tax.
For convenience, I'll just throw in my comment. Then, this is an opportunity for these products that are, I believe, a replacement product for cigarettes, to perhaps imitate the kind of taxation we have on cigarettes and to dedicate it to public health. Seems like a good way to go.
Any other comments or observations? Council member Cher.
Thank you, mayor. You know, I'm not a scientist, and I don't know a lot of the medical data about e-cigarettes or vaping, but from what I have read, it sure seems pretty harmful to directly inject nicotine into one's body, and there may be some benefits compared to actually smoking a cigarette by comparison. But when I look at taxation and regulation, the question for me is always whether it's proportional to the harm that you're seeking to regulate. And in this situation, I would support increased taxation on those products because I do believe that there is a societal benefit and a benefit for government to manage and appropriately regulate through financial means that type of activity. And so, you know, we tax liquor, we tax cigarettes, we tax a number of other products that government and society have deemed appropriate to impose a financial penalty on the users of. And while there's certainly more medical data that needs to come forward on e-cigarettes and vaping, I think there's enough out there that suggests some form of taxation is appropriate.
Any other observations or comments? Council member Paulie.
I'm actually going to start with a question. Looking for a sustainable source of funding is a new syntax on a product that may be hazardous, and we would be hoping to reduce its use, really a stable form of funding for something. Has the pick or SCA at all talked about any other types of taxing structures that they would support, or is this the only one that came up?
This was the only one that came up, but I will say that that concern came up, that as a sustainable source of income on something that you're trying to—
Trying to reduce.
—decrease, yeah, that was brought up as a potential concern. And it was noted that this does—this measure does not explicitly say that should only be e-taxes in vaping devices, but, you know, just more broadly, the sustainable sources of income. But yeah, that was a concern.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Council member Goodman.
So I share the comments that were made so far, and Nina brought up the—it seems like a good—good thing to tax. One of the concerns was a rate that was raised by the committee. Couple of folks raised the concern that if—we're trying to get folks off cigarettes, trying to reduce dependency on cigarettes, and maybe the e-cigarettes vaping is the better way to go, then do we sort of defeat that effort by raising taxes, putting taxes on the e-cigarettes and the vaping, and then people have less of an incentive to switch over or to not start cigarettes at all? So that was one of the concerns. And with Josh, I don't know the science, but it's an interesting dilemma.
You know, actually, I spent some time looking into the research on it. There's emerging research, someplace internationally, I can't remember where it was, but something came out just in the last couple of weeks, that—I think it was Japan—that indicates that there may be carcinogens compounds. Up until very recently, the feeling was there was actually not anything carcinogenic in e-cigs or vaping, but I would say that that's in contention at the moment, but I mean, it's just one study, and who knows where it's going long-term, but it's not obviously carcinogenic the way cigarettes are.
Any other observations or questions? Council president Wintersheim.
Yes, I—you know, if government's duty is to provide for the general welfare of our citizens, obviously, I think the health, physical and mental health of our citizens is part of that duty, and it's not institutionalized in the constitution of the state or the nation, anything about, you know, actually providing health services, but the fact that we've moved in that direction, I think, is appropriate. I see in the material that previously there was a funding source, but that went away when the motor vehicle excise tax went away. So now it's funded out of the general fund, which means that these services are always, as we well know as general fund scrutiners that we are, that—it's all discretionary spending, and it has to battle with priorities of other, very other good priorities, just for public safety, for example, and education, of course, at the state level. And so the idea of believing that that is a basic tenet of public service, of public health, and that a more stable and predictable revenue source is needed, so the concept I'm supportive of, whether or not this type of tax on the item, that's—I don't—that's more difficult. I'm not—it's not as clear to me. I also see in the literature that—they're considered—they are considering another one. They may be proposing a—in next year, some type of voter initiative for healthy children's type initiative, and that some portion of that maybe could be directed toward public funding, the public health. So—and I would just say in general, not just health provided by public health services, but I think even human services in general. Again, which is just a constant battle, and it's always coming out of general fund on how to provide for, you know, people who otherwise, you know, would not have healthy life opportunities and healthy life outcomes. So I'm in support of the overall initiative. I'm not so—as far as this funding source, I'm neutral on that. And I don't have any suggestions beyond what—it's already there.
Any other observations or questions? I think on that issue, my sensing is that there is general support, and I believe that can, you know, provide you the type of guidance to represent well of the council.
This has been very helpful in that. Yes, thank you.
Great discussion. Have you had another item?
I did. I had one more.
Go right ahead.
Slightly larger topic on the—in regards to lifting the 1% property tax cap. The proposed action is to bring the following policy position back to the next pick meeting for possible action, well, we will have it in front of us at the next meeting. The following possible policy position. While cities understand and appreciate property owners' concerns about rising costs and increased property taxes, in some jurisdictions, the current 1% property tax cap has created an ever-widening structural gap between revenues and the costs of providing needed services to residents and making prudent investments in infrastructure. SCA therefore supports legislation to lift the 1% property tax revenue limit.
Who would like to speak first?
I always have a question because I'm new on the block. So I'd like to ask to clarify further—we just talked about this recently, about the cap and how the cities are capped. And I want to understand better, what does that mean in the larger scheme? Let's use a pie, because we always use pie charts when we look at how the tax dollars are distributed throughout the different agencies, and then there's that 13 or 18 or whatever the percent is that goes to the cities. Now, if the county tax revenues increase at whatever rate, let's just say 10%, just some crazy number, then does the city still only get 1% more than what it got last year? Am I understanding this correctly? And where does the rest of it go?
So I can attempt to answer that, or I would prefer that professionally answered.
Although not scheduled to speak on this this evening, our director of finance, who just happens to be here, would—
May I try? My understanding is we, the municipalities, are limited in our increase in net collections on existing properties of 1% per year. This is just changing what we could collect, or increase year to year. That's my understanding of this discussion. So it has nothing to do with the other elements, the other line items in our property tax bill, school district, fire district, other special districts, county, nothing else. It just has to do with your local—your local city, your local municipality, can—what upper limit we could increase the total amount collected year to year. That's my—that's the way I read this. So I don't know if that helps—I think that's the case. Does that help clarify your question?
It does, and if I might draw back in my graphic for those who are visually inclined, which I don't think I am, but right now I'm just looking for any help, is that if the pie gets bigger, our slice gets smaller if we can't increase at the rate that the— as the rest of the revenue increases. No? So is there a commensurate cap on the other elements in our property tax?
There are, under the—
Ian Markot, director of finance.
Thank you, your honor. I'm so busy thinking about, you know, the state constitution and everything. The pie can never be—the pie is only a finite amount, so under the Washington State Constitution, we—as taxing districts statewide can only increase our overall property taxes to any one customer, property tax holder by—I think at the local level, it's $10 per $1,000 of assessed valuation, and then that is broken up to what we call all of the various taxing districts exclusive of the state of Washington. And there is something in the state constitution that says the overall limit, and I'm thinking—I'm not exactly—I can't remember the specifics. I think excluding initiatives approved by the citizens, but just general authority, I think that's $15,000. But don't hold me to it, but I think that's the number. And also to council member Martz's comment, in some cities—we're fortunate here in the city of Issaquah because our distribution of our pie to begin with is we have BNO tax, we have sales tax, we have property taxes, and we have charges for services. And a lot of entities, they don't have—their sales tax base is very small just because of where they're located and history and circumstances. So we've been able to find that well balance and not necessarily be relying on one particular revenue stream. But in a lot of your smaller cities, the only revenue source is maybe the pass-through gas station with a 7-Eleven mini-market type of environment, so they are relying upon property taxes. And when cost of living is going up greater than 1%, a lot of those municipalities have a very, very difficult time.
Can I ask a question of director Markot as well?
Of course.
I just want to make sure I understand, because it's something we've been discussing. Let's say you have a municipality of a certain size. It's stable, it's not building new development, and you have a general inflation rate of 3%, let's say, right? Let's say everything—cost of living is at 3%, your police department is making 3% more per year, your fire department is making 3% more per year, your DSD, everybody's making 3% more per year. Your homes are increasing—you're—tax—your tax base, property tax base is increasing at 3%, but you can still only collect 1% more over the previous year. Is that correct?
That's correct. You know that—you could only—and it's revenue, it's not—it doesn't have anything to do with valuation, so you can only increase it 1% over prior year's collections.
And that is—the language of the bill, or the proposed action, that's what it's getting at. It's—if you had a—if you had a 1% inflation rate, right, that would hypothetically not be a problem. It's when—in times when costs are increasing faster and valuations are increasing faster, the current system does not allow you to generate revenue any faster than 1%, hence the consideration of this.
So a very interesting discussion. Back to the question or the issue that council member Martz brought up, council member Cher.
Thank you. So this is definitely a tricky one, and I know this has been—the issue of taxation and revenue has really been discussed on the transportation context as well. You know, how do we fund our infrastructure around this state? Gas tax, user fees, vehicle miles traveled, you know, there's so many different funding mechanisms that can be employed, and some of them work and some of them don't work so well, and especially when the economy changes course, it has a real impact on how those funding mechanisms operate. I'm sympathetic, obviously, from a city perspective, to municipalities' need for finding revenue sources so that cities can continue their basic operations and do the things they need to do to serve the public. But I'm also sympathetic to the idea of taxes continuing to increase, and I think there was a reason that the people of the state, at least a majority of the people of the state, put that cap in place initially. And I think that was through—if it was Initiative 747 might have been the number several years ago—that instituted that cap. And so before we get to the point of taking legislative action to overrule a citizen initiative, and I don't remember what it passed by, but it was obviously more than 50%, you know, if SCA chartered a study to look at local taxation and revenue sources, I would be fully supportive of something like that, where there could actually be a white paper or a study or something that could be informative as to all the various cities' needs, there could be input from member jurisdictions, something that gives us as policymakers more information rather than saying 1% or more than 1%, because 1% as it is is pretty arbitrary. I mean, that was the number that the initiative came up with, but I don't think I've ever seen the CPI or the price deflator—it's never been exactly 1%. You know, it's 1.6, it's something other—you know, an odd number. And, you know, one analogy comes to mind that I just came up with, which is, you know, if you put out a tray of cookies at your office and it says, "Take one," most people are going to respect that, but if you don't have that sign, boy, those cookies are going to be gone. And so I just fear that if you don't say, "Take 1%," because, you know, in this city, just looking at us, I mean, we've either gone zero or one, and I mentioned this a few weeks ago, it's very binary. We've never done anything in between. So if that cap wasn't there, I do fear that all those cookies could be taken, and cities are going to start looking at how much can we get, to what percentage can we increase that number by to help us get our revenue, and then we can be looking at some pretty ghastly taxation increases. So I would support a study before I would support legislative action.
Can I add one clarification? There was discussion as to potential other options that we might discuss at this upcoming meeting. Some people discussed moving to a different fixed number, other people discussed the possibility of moving to—keying it to cost of living. So there have been discussions, and it is quite possible that when it comes up, it could be, no, don't just get rid of it, move it to some other number, and I'm not saying we should just not—I get that you would rather see— And I'm not saying, I get that you would rather see more information before touching that number.
Councilmember Barber.
And that was my first thought, as you were saying that too, Tola, was in regards to the fact that there is not a cap, you're not saying, okay, we're going to lift it to 2% or 3% and stabilize it there. So if you're leaving this a blank number, as we heard from Josh, that it could literally go to whatever that community's needs are. I also have the concern, I was writing my notes in regards to the fact that this was voted by the populace, and I think it would be really hard for a entity to go back and try and change something that was voted in by the majority of voters in the Washington And also then it goes to what this would do to those who are living on a fixed income. Property tax and staying in their homes for a lot of people are an essential piece, and a lot of them are just barely getting by now. And if all of a sudden we begin to allow the property taxes to increase, that could have some real difficult effects on some of our fixed income citizens, so.
Oh, have you spoken yet, Naina? Well, you're going to have to wait for Paul.
So speaking just more philosophically, so we have, sales tax is a regressive tax, and we have a dependency upon that type of tax here and elsewhere. I think property does better reflect an ability for somebody to pay. And even if the mechanism, if there was a change and the mechanism was similar to in what could be collected, if you study how that mechanism works today, somebody whose property values increase at a greater rate than others that may be increasing at a less rate, they're going to have significantly different changes in their bills, their property tax bill. That generally does track with people's ability to pay. So, you know, I think looking at ways that we could make our overall tax system more fair, and if this is viewed through that lens, and I think in balance with other sources of revenue that we use, such as sales tax, and then if a body such as ours, you know, could, you know, implement policies and revenue plans that we think would be more fair because we had more ability to fine-tune on the property side, then I would be very interested in that. Did that make sense?
Yes. Thank you.
Councilmember Milligan.
Thank you. And I wanted to verify that I understood the topic before I made, stated an opinion about it. I didn't want to go off on something until I was sure I understood it correctly, and I did. And Tola, I wanted to contribute to the discussion that, like Josh, the cookie analogy works for me. Having a cap on such tax increases is very helpful to the citizens because they don't get a lot of say in this sort of thing, and if you institute tax increases that a body can take with just the elected officials making the decision, they're kind of left out of the loop, and I like it being fairly strict. So increasing the cap is not necessarily what I would support, rather an evaluation of a better distribution of any increased tax revenues that the larger taxing agency collects would be what I would be for, rather than increasing, getting into a fight about, well, I want more of my part, but have it indexed to the revenue that's being received. Does that make sense? You know, so you made a point how increased property values increase property tax revenues. And right now, if property value goes up a certain amount, even if it went up astronomically, the city's portion only goes up a teeny bit, and it's not indexed to that increase of cost of living or property value. So that sort of index would be more commensurate, too.
Can I just ask, so you would generally be supportive if there was a fixed or calculated mechanism, but you're not supportive of just a blanket removing of the limit?
Correct.
Okay.
Replacing with another index, yeah. Thank you.
Other observations or comments? Councilmember Paulie.
I'll be really brief. I'm glad you understand what Naina said, because I agree with the way she said it. So some sort of change, but not a removal of the current 1% cap and not just jumping to another number, something else. And Josh as well, his point about maybe a white paper is due, appropriate at first? I would agree with that.
Anyone else? So you have a mixture of opinions on this one.
I sure do.
I'm just going to make an editorial comment for those that might be watching this. Issaquah is a member of Sound Cities Association, a group of 38 or 39 cities, and what we're doing right now is discussing the city of Issaquah's position on some items that will be considered by Sound Cities Association. And there are two opportunities. One is to support, one is not to support, and there's always a third opportunity, and that's to abstain if there's not clear direction on how to proceed based on what our representative to the Public Issue Committee, which is considering this action, what our representative hears in this discussion. So with that clarification, I boot Councilmember Scher.
You know, I neglected Mayor during committee reports to mention one other item, which I'll mention now for good of the order. That is tomorrow, from 4:00 to 5:30 p.m. in the Pickering Room, right before our Infrastructure Committee meeting, there is going to be an open house on concurrency and future city growth. And so members of the public are welcome to attend that meeting. There's plenty of room in the Pickering Room, it's a big space, so come on down. There's lots of room for you there to express your comments and thoughts. You know, this is a really big issue about how growth will be addressed and paid for in this city. And if you can't make it because you're getting out of work and ironically you're stuck in traffic, then come at 5:30 for the actual committee meeting, because concurrency is our first item on the agenda. And so if you miss the open house, we're going to spend about two hours of our meeting on that topic as well. So that is tomorrow in the Pickering Room of City Hall Northwest, over by the Holiday Inn on 12th, and hopefully we'll see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Since you've mentioned that, I won't have to mention it under good of the order. Now, I believe Council President Winterstein had an issue for the good of the order.
Yeah, for the good of the order. So we also, like Sound Cities, are part of the Eastside Human Services Forum, and this Thursday at 2:00 p.m., the forum will be hosting our annual meeting and all members of the public. Our partners and friends within, throughout our communities are invited to join. And of course, I'll be there, I'll be emceeing the event, but the opportunity for all council members who are interested in matters concerning human services is to be an opportunity to get caught up on important human services efforts happening throughout the east side, new collaborations and new lines of thinking and cooperations that are developing, and also just to network with others, you know, throughout the community, and also to also help us shape our 2015 work plan. We're going to conduct this event, and it's going to have a retreat-type feel to it. There'll be an opportunity for all members of the forum, including human services providers and various electeds and representatives from the different cities. We're actually going to have some conversation in a roundtable format, really to develop the foundation for our work plan for the upcoming year. So anyway, this is the annual meeting, it's 2:00 this Thursday at Peter Kirk Community Center in Kirkland, and you can learn more about it from the Eastside Human Services Forum website.
Thank you. Councilmember Paulie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had sent around an email about a week ago talking about Eastside Fire and Rescue planning for a retreat next January, but also whether or not the council wanted to have any input in draft goal setting. So we have been asked as directors to provide input back to EFNR so that they can come up with a list. I haven't received anything by email, but we don't have a deadline yet, so if people have information they'd like to share tonight, that's great, but it's also possible to do this in the next week or so, recognizing that we had a holiday week last week, and it was rather short. So if anybody has input tonight or wants to come up with even just general language of what they would like, some content that they would like to see in the goal-setting exercise, go ahead, let me know, and I'll keep track of it. And before I submit it, I'll make sure I send everything back through the group.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Paulie. Is there also, as I looked at these goals, I didn't have the background of objectives or some other, maybe of the overarching language that might inform what specific goals might be. Is there some other kind of hierarchy of that information? And if you had it, then I would be happy to look it over with you.
Okay, so these goals that we're looking at were set in 2013. I wasn't part of that process, so Eileen, I don't know if you have any other information you want to add around how the list is compiled or what other documents might be important to share?
Well, at this time, the meeting is set for the end of January, which was going to be our awards evening, but is now going to be, temporarily, that date is now set for the retreat. Right now, we are just collecting information from all the different members, and that will be compiled, and then the agenda will be set forward with that information. So it's not just Issaquah, but all of the members will be offering some information as to different items for that evening.
Are there any other pieces of information that we would want to share in terms of how, say, for example, these goals were established? Or at a workshop, at a retreat, is that how it was done? There's nothing else, so.
Well, it was at a retreat.
Okay, is there anything else for good of the order? Seeing none, then, we will now move into executive session to discuss property acquisitions per RCW 42.30.110, per N1, per NB, and C. So we're moving into executive session at 7:21. We are back in regular session at 8:32. Council President Winterstein.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to authorize the administration to negotiate and execute a purchase and sale agreement for real property as outlined during executive session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded discussion. All those in favor of authorizing the administration to negotiate and execute a purchase and sale agreement for real property as outlined during executive session, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
The motion carries 6-1 with Councilmember Scher in opposition. Since there is no other business to come before the council, the council is adjourned at 8:33.